So we'll call the meeting to order at four eighteen. Can we have a roll call of the members?
Susan, Dominican eye.
Vicki Wannaker here.
Um, Kate McDonald here.
Kelly Mackie here.
Okay. Thank you. You do have a worm. Uh, who would like to read the invocation? I would like to read it. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. And right on to item one point four. Do we have any audience that wishes to address the committee? Do you have any audience besides Jim out there?
No.
Okay. On to one point five, agenda modifications.
So I've not yet received the contract on three point two point two or two point three. Um, yeah, I do have a speech on language pathology. One.
Okay.
And we got another one that didn't get on the agenda, so. I will not have either of those to present. I can tell you about.
All right. Anything else? So we need a motion to approve those changes? Those are my vacation?
I guess so, yeah, we do.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we remove items three point two point two and three point two point three from the agenda.
I can second that.
All right. Any further questions or comments? And we get a vote.
Susan Dominican eye.
Vicki Wannaker, eye.
Kate McDonald, eye.
Kelly Mackie, eye.
All right, thank you. Moving right along, the approval of the minutes for April eleventh.
The shortest meeting ever.
That was the short one, wasn't it?
It was.
Right. Okay, we all approved those minutes. You need a motion?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you.
I second that.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? And we can have a vote.
Susan Dominican eye.
Vicki Wannaker, eye.
Kelly Mackie, eye.
All right. Moving right along. Item two, financial reports. That is Jim. Hi, Jim.
He's in a different room today.
Yeah, I had to move, I had to move to a temporary office to get in the background. All right, can everyone see? Okay, so April, we're updating for April. Um, not a big change from the expectation. A little less revenue, a little more expense, so net wrong direction. Um, not, not too much, you know, kind of what we've been talking about this year. I think we're in the range of thirty thousand dollars. Change. Uh, I don't have the official P two, but we have the reports kind of through the P two range. So our forecast for P two would be about two thirty-two on the ADA. Uh, we were pretty close. I think we were at two thirty-four in our forecast. So it looks like it will probably be at about two thirty-two. Expenses climbed a little. Um, approaching the hundred seventy-five, so four million, one hundred seventy-five range. I think we were closer to four one fifty. Last month. Kind of a note, if we're working with this two sixty-two enrollment range, which is kind of where we were this year. We're probably looking at a three point eight million dollar budget. Um, as we said, this year is creeping towards four point two, you know, more than four point one five. Um, so worth noting, that's kind of the natural operating budget. I'll have a little more revenue next year from the one-time revenue. So you're probably looking at a three point nine, but on an ongoing basis, you're closer to a three point eight, uh, two sixty-two. Um, with those adjustments, surplus is hovering around one sixty. So we have the single, the, the recognition of the prior year four thirty-five. So that would mean that the current year operated at about a two seventy-six deficit. To net at that one fifty-nine, one sixty range. Um, something we've been talking about all year. Cash looks really good now. There's been this, the influx of the new grants. So we do have to note, you know, cash has strengthened. It is strong today. It is strong tomorrow. But there's a lot of specialized grants, uh, providing cushion for that cash. And if the school, you know, needed to increase expenses to benefit from that, or determine you're not going to use all of that. Um, potentially some of that cash would have to be returned. So. When we do the balance sheet, it, it's tricky to show. What we try to show then is like, oh, you have six sixteen cash, but that's a bunch of money for next year. So your current operating cash is closer to zero. That's fine. Good news is, is you have cash today. Uh, it's just noting that there's a lot of specialized grants creating that. That's why there's this disconnect. Where I'm saying your surplus is operating at a loss, but your cash is growing. But final message, cash stabilized. That was something we were worried about for the first six months of the year. Now looks solid for the rest of this year and going into next year.
Wow, I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, that makes, that's the first one to go, right? Before, even before any kind of like. Like, how's June gonna end? This, this, where's my cash in the next ten days? So we, we feel much better that it's stabilized. Uh, here, you can kind of see the, um, enrollment and attendance trend. Uh, this year was a really difficult attendance year. Kind of averaging between eighty-seven to ninety percent during most of the year. And so you see a pretty big gap between the enrollment number and the attendance number. Um, pretty consistent in those ranges, so that gap, whether attendance, excuse me, enrollments increased or decreased. Still having that similar rate, uh, not exceeding ninety percent. Now, with some strength at the beginning of the year, you can average close to ninety percent. It's still a lot lower than we would normally like to see. Budgeted at ninety-four, being realized around ninety. Uh, positive. I think this will hold up. Um, so to get concentration funding, you have to have a UPP fifty-five percent plus. Blue Oak has been operating closer to fifty-eight percent, but you're also capped by the district. And as a P one, uh, the district reported above fifty-five percent. And so it's a small number, but Blue Oak was always eligible and was being capped by the district. And so just that district report bumped Blue Oak into eligibility for concentration. And so instantly added, uh, in this case, it's a small amount, right? They're just over the fifty-five. So it's about eleven thousand, but that helped offset the decline of the two ADAs. That's worth about one ADA. Um, if the district reports above fifty-five. No changes in the expectation. You can see this year was, you know, assisted by about a million dollars in specialized grants. Next year, that'll drop about seven hundred and fifty thousand down to the range of two fifty. And then from there, down to about a hundred, a hundred and twenty. Outlook past them. So those were the main changes was ADA coming in lower than we'd modeled at the beginning of the year. And then the ability to include that whole harmless four hundred thirty-five thousand and the new grants from the state, helping strengthen, um. Other state revenue to push the revenue up above four million, closer to where that budget has been. Spenses, sorry. Spense model, not a lot of change from March. About fifteen thousand over. Revenue down, you know, like I said, about thirty in ADA, but the, the UPP helped boost that. Cut that back to a decline closer to twenty thousand in revenue and then expense creep a little. About fifteen thousand, small number on four million dollar budget. Um, other than that, most expenses look similar, but we'll keep watching that. It's a little more time to go in the year, right? So you can see this is trending closer and closer to four point two million, where a two sixty-two enrollment is probably more of a three point eight, three point nine million. Operating budget. Inclusive of the whole harmless, the school could report the gain close to one sixty. Ended about nineteen percent surplus, seven hundred eighty thousand. Good news on cash. So at present and trending through the rest of the year, above the fifteen percent line where we want to be. So it can feel a lot better, especially heading into purchasing for the new year, where cash starts to outpace. Uh, inflow, outflow, outpaces inflow, like have strength at the end of June, predicting to have a good cash stability at June thirtieth. Starting out the year strong. Lots of items coming up. June is very busy, right? Um, big one being really planning for next year. So the whole cycle of LCAP, local indicators, budget, and all the reports related around that are underway. And ultimately, it's the approved in June. Are any questions about the April? Any other questions about April financial update?
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Were we finished there? Thank you.
Yeah, unless, unless you have any other questions.
No, we're good. Thank you, Jim. Right? Everybody's good. Thank you. Alrighty. Moving on to three, business. Three point one, administrative pay schedule update. You want to do that? Maybe you're drunk, me too. There's.
You should do that.
The update is that we're still collecting resources to get a better picture of. What Susan does and how she's going to be compensated for it. We found one school that had five positions that does everything she does.
So, sorry, are we solely looking at Susan's position, or are we doing the whole admin pay scale?
Just Susan's position, right?
Okay.
But that'll set up the process for the others, right? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we ultimately would like to do an overall of all the management positions, but right now we're focused on the one.
One at a time.
Yeah, one at a time.
And the, some of the resources that we're gathering are going to be used in all of that too. So we're ahead of ourselves.
To get, uh, salary skills from schools that are like ours. Because they don't have the same design that we do. So we're looking at also, um. You know, the, just the, the setup. So it's going to take a lot longer than we anticipated. Personally, this takes part of, I need to do some of it and I, I've said.
Right.
This is not my priority this month, so.
No.
Let's take a little more.
We don't really have a, a deadline. That's, you know, a real true deadline. So we'll get it done right. And then the other ones will be easier. Um. So that is what's up with the administrative pay schedule. And on to item three point two, we've got the speech language pathologist contract. Yes, right.
So, um, this year, our, um. Uh, Anna, who came to us this year as a school psychologist, went on to find a full-time job. We do not have a full-time position to offer.
Right.
Um, we have two days a week. So advantage therapies, uh, therapy and someone we've been talking to for a while about working with them. And so they have presented a contract to cover two days a week for, um. Of speech services, which is what we've had this year. And with all of the consultation and IEP doing and all that. So I would like to ask that we recommend this contract to be approved by the board.
Can I ask, um, like financially, is it similar to having an employee? Is it similar to what we've done before with getting outside consultants?
Yes, it is. So can you roll it down and say what it says per hour? I think it's a hundred and fifteen dollars an hour. Um, for fifteen hours a week. So it's pretty similar. To what we would be paying if we paid somebody there is. Paying somebody on site.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, fifteen, it will benefit some transportation, things like that are included. So have to remember that. That's not an hourly so much as it's the full compensation.
Full package, yes, you're right.
So.
So they would be on contract for a couple of days here.
Couple of days. That's, you know, we're using that for our behaviorist students, working really well, you know, um. It, again, they come when we need that for that petition and, and we'll, uh, we've asked for that, but they're not ready to give it to us yet. We'll also get that again, and they come when we need them and help us review a student. Then they go work for somebody else. We're also doing that with our, right now with IEPs. Um, we're our school psychologists and counseling. We're going to continue to use it for counseling, but we'll go back to having, um. Uh, Jo Lynn, which some of us know, um, who worked with us for about half the year this year. And so she and I have talked. And, um, she'll do, come back to us on a per IEP basis.
Oh, man.
That, so she's, she'll be available to us. She's retired. She only wants to make so much money. She made too much money last year, so she left us. But now she's like, so, so now she's planning for the next year and she's ready to come back. So.
All right.
As long as we stay within that. And then the, you know, we've used the, um. The, um, online person, I've done, I've worked with her in two IEPs now and that works out okay too. So, you know, it's, right, keeping the servants for the students.
Yeah, sounds good. Any further questions, comments? Do we have a motion? I move that we accept the, um, speech language pathologist therapy services contract. All right, Susan seconds. Any other comments, questions, and we will vote. Vicki Wannaker, right?
Go ahead, Kate.
Kate McDonald, eye.
Kelly Mackie, eye.
Susan Dominican eye.
Alrighty. Moving on to three point three. Or nine ninety return.
Got going on here. So this is annually, our, because we are a, um.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit, we do a nine ninety. This has been done by, um, our auditors.
All right.
They do for us every year. And then there it is, and we need to approve or, or recommend it to the board.
All right. All right, and this is for the year.
Two, this is, yeah.
All right.
Last. Organization's twenty twenty-one. So it's.
Oh, yeah, it's dated that far back. There, okay, the air ending, ending to twenty. Good. Okay, that makes more sense. All right. Um. Questions? Questions? And we need a motion. I move that we accept, um, I move that we present the form nine ninety. Return to the board at the next meeting. Is that what I wanted to do? Yes.
I was thinking that.
Okay, alrighty, and vote.
Susan Dominican eye.
Vicki Wannaker.
Eye.
Kate McDonald, eye. Kelly Mackie, eye.
Right. E-rate funding approved. Item three point four. Is that you also saying? What is E-rate funding?
So, um, this doesn't need to be moved or approved. This is for information.
Okay.
Um. We apply every year for E-rate funding. That is funding that is set aside for schools and libraries.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to support, um. Computer technology, internet and related services.
Okay.
Um, internet and phone service, for example, are some primary, um, way. And it, it's a, it's a, a commitment that the state has to reducing our costs. For, it doesn't eliminate it, but it reduces it, so.
All right. Well, that's a lot of computers. It's a lot of tech, I see. All right, thank you.
We work with, um, this is Heather, but we work with, uh, Rachel, what's her last, Rachel White's name. And it's just wonderful to have resources like that. People that know what they're doing. You just have to say, is this, what, what do we do? Maybe qualify? Do we qualify? And they said, yes, and here, sign this paper, so.
Excellent, we appreciate them. Yeah, good deal. Thank you for the good news. Item three point five, the LCAP.
So this is just, um, you know, an update on where the LCAP is. We do approve it every June, um. As I was working with Jim earlier, I realized that we never have it ready for you all in May. Because, um, we're still working on the budget and we're still finishing last year's stuff. So, um, we're getting close to having, um, the financial portion of last year's LCAP ready to load in. And we're going to work on that this week. And then we can't finish it until the budget is, um, in, closer to being done. So, um, the actual LCAP won't be done, um, this month. I'm also still collecting. Uh, input, we had meetings with all the school staff this last week. I met with a parent council. We had a town hall meeting, but it was very small, so, um. Uh, that, so didn't get a lot of input on that, but it did get me to write questions, so that's good. Anyway, um, and so I'm still working on getting a, um. A questionnaire out of the survey for my information, um. But a real focus for, um, social justice for both parent council and the, um, staff. And then a, uh, a lot of talk about parent involvement from the parent council. And a lot of talk about professional development from the staff. So those will be focused, as I'm sure, as part of everything.
Okay. Well, good. Item three point six, voluntary financial support for staff members.
Don't think I gave that to you, did I?
Yeah.
Let me share that with Susan. There's a page that goes with it.
Yes.
So our parent council, very generously. Um, gave a donation for one of our teachers who is, um, struggling with a serious illness. Um, gave him a donation. So in the process, our. Um, back office people said you need to check and make sure of how you're doing this, so we did. Um, and. You know, can we do this? Well, the auditor was the one to ask, and he said, well, yes, you can, but you need to do something, do something about it. So because you can't, it's, and it's not because this was learning to me. It was not because we're a school or gifted public funds. It is because we are a nonprofit organization, have a five oh one C three. And five oh one C three cannot give their money to a individual unless. We have a class established. So, um, what this does is it says that we are establishing the, a class of employees to be able to receive contributions to support through a medical crisis. And so we need to have, rather than we're giving to this person, we need to say, we'll give money to this. This type of, this class of.
Right.
So employee has a serious health condition, holds a Walder certification, is salaried. And has six or more years of continuous service.
All four of those.
All four of those have to be met in order to, um, be allowed to be given donations to the school. To pay the, um, member of staff.
Oh.
Um, the, the, there of course are other ways that people can donate to someone, like donors choose and things like that.
Yeah.
But if our organization wants to raise money to give an employee, which is what was done here. Then we have to have a class so that, so this will not only apply to the current situation, but in any further, any future.
Any future situations like that. Okay, my question is, how many of your staff hold Walder certification?
Um.
Hmm.
My question.
It's, I, I know, I have to count.
Plenty.
But the point is, it excludes people.
It does, and that's part of establishing a class, unless we're going to say. Um. Yeah, so it's part of establishing a class. What? So somebody who has, um. And. So how did, so if somebody who is really a key employee to the school in some way.
Right.
A key employee at this school would be me, and I would be the only one as a key employee officially for the admin life.
Uh-huh.
Um, they have to be your top ten percent. You have to have decision-making experience.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I didn't go with that, but I did go with, what is it that most affects our school? Um, and so I left it at that. Now, I am not also. Um, married to this language. This is the language I pulled out.
Yeah.
Um, I do want to, I would advocate strongly for the six or more years of continuous service.
I agree with everything that you, the exclusion of those without. The Walder certification, it just, because you're all a staff. I mean, there's still your peers and family. They haven't been able to get to one of the press.
Yes.
What about like a full-time employee? But I don't know, that's also very exclusionary.
Could be, um, can be.
So this is, well, salary itself will tell you is exclusionary. It's only really the administration and the.
Certified.
Certified employees are salaried, and Buck is the only classified salary employee.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so.
But they're salaried with, uh, just a California pension instead of salary. Instead of salaried with the state credential and the Waldorf cert.
Right.
Okay.
So we kept it at salary. It would be, you know, that management and faculty. It would not be um, other.
It wouldn't be, you know, support staff.
Yeah, it wouldn't be support staff.
Yeah. Well, and this is only going through the school.
There are other ways.
There are other ways.
Share with everybody.
Yes, there are other ways to do it.
Okay.
So and I suppose if we came up with it again and people were like, no, we have to give to this person. Then I would say. We change this language, but it's also really um, an unusual situation and. And to me should be for those that we depend most heavily on for the school.
Yes.
People can give by donor choose or other things like that, you know? So they could write, directly write her a check. The parent council cannot directly write her a check. We can do that if we have this classification set up. So and what we do is we'll, we'll give her a pay adjustment for it. So she'll get an extra paycheck. So.
Okay.
And part of this is just to go, oh, okay, we figured out how to do this. We need to say that. So we can do it directly. Part of it is that. So.
So this is just our first look and we'll share it with the board next week. And then.
So the sooner we get this, the thing is, the sooner we get this done, the sooner she gets the.
The cat.
Baby right now. So and be very accepting, but.
We can make a motion and approve it. And then that'll be done. Hmm.
What are you thinking, Kate?
I think the only place that I am stuck is the Waldorf certification, certification. Um, I feel like it is important that we do have staff members or faculty members that hold our Waldorf certificates because um, they're, they're necessary, necessary to have our Waldorf school.
Right.
And so we need as many of them here as possible.
Um, but this might not be the place.
I don't, I don't know if, you know, I'm thinking about like, what if we had an employee who's worked at our school for ten plus years in, in a role that is an important role, but doesn't have a Waldorf certificate?
Yeah.
You know, there's, those teachers could and would exist. I can think of one in particular. So I don't, I like salaries. I like six or more years of experience. I like, you know, the first one. I would hate a serious health condition to happen to anyone. But um, yeah, it's the whole, holds the holder certificate that is the the part that feels a little icky to me.
Okay. So are we okay with leaving that out?
I am.
Is that what you're okay with then?
I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Yeah.
It would still be the limited number of employees who have significant amount of time in the school.
It would end up being. Okay.
I, I, I don't know what to say.
Are you?
Say that again. You're not sure how you feel about it?
Yeah. I don't know how I feel about it.
Yeah.
It feels exclusionary.
Okay.
And when we talk about people who are important here, like I can't really think of a job that's not important here. I don't know.
So it's the line is salaried? Or do you feel it's the line that's?
Yeah, I mean, salaried that would.
So if we took out full Waldorf certification and the salary portion, then it would just be a serious of health condition and that they've worked here for six or more continuous years.
Yeah, I feel that that would be less exclusionary. And if somebody's worked here for six or more continuous years, they are committed and a valuable person here.
So that opens it to all support staff.
If, yeah.
Everybody.
To everybody. But they've had, but they've been here for six years. So it's not, you know, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, and like a serious health condition prevents you from working.
Is six the magic number? Is six the magic number here?
Well, it's more than five and it's the last thing to think of.
Yeah.
I was satisfied. I thought, well, five years is, would be the minimum for me. And ten felt like too many. So I went for six.
That would be, that would be a small population.
Okay. Well, by the time, you know, five years of, five years in a job, you're considered to know your job and do it well.
Yeah.
In most cases. So that's part of it. If somebody's been here one year and they're still learning their position.
Right.
Which if they've been here five years. They, they are on, I'm not gonna say autopilot, but there's somebody that doesn't need instruction to do their job. You know, they're at that level where they're doing it.
Unless they're doing their first rotation and then they're learning each grade.
Yeah, yeah, but they're still five years in teaching, even though it's a new class every year. It's still, you know. And with support staff, it means they've been doing some level of that position or type of position. So, so I felt like, you know, five years is kind of considered the time when you're. Um, you're trying, you know.
Yeah.
You're trying.
You're part of the team.
So you're telling other people what you do rather than other people telling you what you need to do.
So how do we feel about full-time or part-time? Do we care if that's in here? Because none of the support staff are actually full-time.
Well, the office, the office staff are.
Yeah.
A number three of the office staff are full-time. So but not all of the office staff are not, and the aides are not.
So leave that.
Only a few of the aides are.
Okay, and remember, this is just one vehicle for giving financial support to people in our community.
And we can, we can create this knowing that it can be adapted in the future if necessary.
Yes. It will be harder and the reason I threw the, everything in there is it's much harder to shut things down than it is to open things up. So if we, for example, decided seven years was more appropriate sometime in the future, that would be harder.
Yes.
Um, but if we decided five years was, people would be fine with it. You know, that's, it's that, you know, so to put the stricter lines in first and decide what you don't want, rather than making way open, you know.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I definitely um, love taking out the holds of the Waldorf certi- certification. Because, you know, thinking even about the salary people who um. Are on staff and here for six or more years, they don't hold Waldorf certifications.
There's a number of them that don't.
Yeah, many of them. So definitely that one, um, I think could go. And I think is salaried, I also feel like that could probably go and I would feel. Yeah, I mean, I would, I think it could go and I would feel good about it. It would feel more like the, I guess, family that we are.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will.
Would you feel about it?
I have a motion to accept.
So I am a move that we recommend to the board. This um, establishing this classification.
Okay.
Um, with uh, including the factors of the serious health condition and six or more years of continuous service only.
I second that motion. And voting?
Susan Dominican, aye.
Vicki Wannaker, aye.
Kate McDonald, aye.
Kelly Mackey, aye.
All righty. Thank you. That was a good discussion. And you're up, Susan.
What am I talking about next?
Executive Director's Report.
Our report is kind of short for this group. We are continuing to work on staffing. We have filled both the kitchen position and uh, replaced the um. Uh, janitor um, with our current janitor moving on next year and noticed the clean floor in the room.
Woo.
Yeah. Um, that's, yeah, that was the.
That's.
And that's part of the deal. Kat is out of the kitchen. She's supporting, but she's much more like happy, you know, she's just.
Happening her step.
Happen, more happen, you know?
Yeah.
Um, uh, Bree, Anna Lee let us know that she is moving on. She has found a music position at the um, district and she's very excited about that.
Good.
Um, but so and to replace her, Kendrick Cooley, who is currently um, in our second grade class, has agreed to take eighth grade on. We're all cheering for her. She never saw herself teaching above second grade and, but she's agreed to take us on um. Uh, eighth grade. Luckily, we have a lot of teachers who then taught eighth grade. So I ask she will be well supported. She also comes um, you know, in, in reviewing her. Her application, she comes with Waldorf experience in a Waldorf preschool and certified there in a lot of study and work in the area of equity. So I feel like we will um, we will really benefit from her um, being on staff for us. Appreciate.
Right.
Um, so we are working on interviewing for Spanish. Uh, we've reached out a couple of times. We do have someone we're interviewing next week, so we're hoping someone will fill that position. I do have concerns about it, though. We kind of uh, limped through last year um, with a Spanish-speaking sub and she did her best, but didn't strengthen it. But I shouldn't say that. But we really want somebody who is fully committed to teaching um, Spanish for us and able to do that. So um, I have some questions in my mind about how if we don't um, get somebody by the end of this month, how we're going to look forward. So that is a question I may be putting forward to the community. What do we want to do? Do we want to do sign language? We, you know, do we want to go, there are um. There are those who will teach over, um, you know, Zoom basically. Do we want a Zoom teacher, which is more important? Um, so I may be asking some of those questions if we cannot fill that position for another year. Um, we are also have recruited for a counseling position. We did some interviews last week. We have some more. This week, the interview, the current interviews will be um, completed by Thursday. And hopefully we'll have a, a person out of that. We always have to remember, though, that these people are are applying for many different positions. And so we may pick the perfect one and they will tell us they've already got another job. So um. That, so that, those are the main areas that we're working on right now. I'm in looking at what we'll be doing for um. For aides for next year and other support positions. Our grant funding, where we are, um, we, I, I'm completing the plans for the expanded learning grant. We need to put, have a calendar with thirty days beyond our regular education days. And we need nine hours a day for those days. Um, we are looking at right now two weeks, which will be ten of those days for um, summer school. I'll be, I have three teachers that already said they want to teach. So I think we'll be fine as far as that level of staff. But to make it the nine-hour days, we'll need some time after the teachers are done. I'm not expecting teachers to do a nine-hour day. Please put that in your. But so we'll need to have some additional funding for what we do after the education program um, is done. And then um, probably ten days during the school year that we'll have the expanded learning. And then a summer, a WOW summer camp in the, in June is what I'm. Had to do a lot of different scenarios and I felt like that one felt the best, particularly those thirty days. Um, so education in the fall play more in uh, June. So. Um, it feels better. So working on that, we also um, are putting together our work for the Community Schools Partnership Grant. I have Mandy Kling and um, Amber Bass, who were um, part of bringing this grant to us, writing proposals for next year, um, for what they think we need to do as far as um, doing the um. Planning portion so that we'll, we'll be ready for the grant. And I've had some great conversations about exciting things um, that I think will be coming out of that. So I am pretty excited about that.
Good things.
Then working on the budgets. Yes, Jim, I'm working on the budget and the LCAP. Those are the things to do next.
All right. All right. Comments, questions? Was alright. Thank you, Susan.
Um, Susan, for the last summer camp, are we looking for next year? Next summer?
June.
Next summer.
So it's the thirty days is from July first to July thirtieth.
Only.
So the WOW camp will be two weeks in June.
Cool. And then um, summer school starting this summer.
Yes.
Being this summer. Okay.
All right, I will adjourn the meeting after I tell you the next meeting is June thirteenth, Tuesday, four fifteen. Thank you.